On Wednesday, October 1st, this is the Orion Township, Charter Township of Orion Planning Commission. We're at the Orion Township Municipal Complex Boardroom. Can I have a roll call, please?
Reynolds.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Joshua.
Here.
Urbanowski.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Cummins, absent with notice. Lovett.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We do have a public hearing this evening at the advertised 7:05 time for PC 25-44, which is the Township Initiated Text Amendment to Zoning Ordinance 78, updates to Article 20.1234, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and portions thereof, and providing an effective date. There is a, since there is a public hearing, we will proceed with our regular agenda as far as we can take it until the advertised 7:05 time. At that time, I will close or adjourn the regular meeting, open the public hearing, offer the petitioner, which is ourselves, the township, the opportunity to make a brief presentation, and then it will turn over to citizens for their questions and comments during the public hearing portion. We ask that everyone limit one trip to the podium in three minutes to keep the conversation moving along. If we have any citizen letters, we'll read that into the record, then turn it over to the Planning Commission for their opportunity for questions and comments during the public hearing portion. And if there's any questions in the petitioner, therefore the township would like to answer, they have the opportunity to do so, then we will close the public hearing and reconvene a regular meeting. There is the code of conduct, along with our public hearing components on the back of your agenda this evening. If anyone would like to go over the details, again, asking everyone to just be respectful of the process and one trip up to the podium in a maximum of three minutes. With that said, we're going to proceed with our agenda as far as we can take it, which is item number three, our meeting minutes from our August 17th Planning Commission meeting, are both our regular meeting minutes and also the, sorry, did I say August? I said September 17th, and then also PC 27, or 25-37, Old Detroit Burger Bar Special Lane Use Hearing Minutes. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
A motion, do I have support? Support by Mr. Lovett for their discussion by the Planning Commission. Seeing none, any public discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please stay with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item number four is agenda review and approval. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as submitted.
Moved by Mr. Lovett, supported by Mr. Joshua, further discussion by the Planning Commission. Any public discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please stay with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. That leads us to item number five, which is brief public comment on non-agenda items. Is anyone present looking to make public comment on a non-agenda item this evening? No one racing up to the podium, we'll move along with item number six, which is our consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Like to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I have a motion by Mr. Lovett, supported by.
Support.
Mrs. Urbanowski, further discussion by the Planning Commission. Seeing none, any public discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please stay with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Unfortunately, I didn't talk long enough to lead us to 7:05, so we'll take a brief recess at 7:03 and wait for 7:05 for the advertised time where we can start the public hearing portion. So give us just a second. All right, I now have 7:05, so I'd like to adjourn our regular meeting and open the public hearing for PC 25-44, which, as mentioned, is the Township Initiated Text Amendment to Zoning Ordinance 78, updates to Article 20, 20.1, 20.02, 20.03, and 20.04. Generally speaking, the proposed text amendment is to Railroad Freight Yard District within our zoning ordinances. As mentioned in advertising, there is providing some repeal of conflicting ordinances and general updates. There is some adoption of some, I would say, expanded upon uses that would be allowed within the railroad freight yard uses, although there are some regulations that would dictate how those can be used, and essentially some agreements that would allow us to have some oversight on those. Anything else, I guess, that comes up, we can address during the public hearing. So with that said, I will open the public hearing to any citizens who are looking to make any questions or comments during the public hearing portion of this case. All right, seeing no one racing up to the podium once again, I will turn it over to the Planning Commission for their questions, comments during the public hearing portion. All right, very popular topic this evening. All right, since there was no questions or comments during the public hearing, I'd like to close the public hearing for PC 25-44 at 7:06 and reconvene our regular meeting, which leads us to item 7A, which is PC 25-33, which is Alter Ridge, previously Regal Terrace condominium located at 2410 South LaPierre Road, Parcell 0923, 301015. If the petitioner is present, you want to step up to the podium for us, please? Do me a quick favor.
Sure.
Will you press the gray button at the bottom of your microphone and the base of the microphone have a green light turn on? Thank you.
Yep, so again, good evening, Planning Commission and staff. My name is Jason Icoangeli. I'm a certified planner on staff with Old Brothers, who the master deed and bylaws that are before you this evening have been drafted for Alter Ridge, which was formerly known as.
Regal Terrace. Regal.
Regal Terrace, yes, which was a most sherry project that was going to be for rent townhomes, and these are going to be for sale as condominium units, hence the master deed. So the Exhibit B documents haven't been completed just yet because we're still in the process of working with your planning department to make sure that they're comfortable that the plan is basically the same as Regal Terrace. So just some subtle differences, building sizes, same number of units, or actually one unit less than the actual Regal Terrace project, but same number of buildings, same location, same, pretty much same everything. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yep, so understood. So generally speaking, we will see a site plan amendment application, or it's already in the works, so this is the opportunity to start working on the condominium documents, correct?
Correct.
Okay. At this point in time, if you don't mind, I'll turn it over. We have reviews at this point in time, so it's worthwhile at least kind of walking through those. So you want to walk us through our overview, or do you want to?
Actually, what I can interject is that the consultants reviewed the condo documents.
Okay.
And then that was sent to the attorney, and the attorneys worked through it. So any comments that were in the consultant's reviews have already been incorporated and accepted, so there's really no need to go over their reviews.
Okay, wonderful, perfect. Just to clarify, any other comments or anything engineering or planning would like to add before we proceed with deliberation? All right, so in my opinion, I'll turn over the Planning Commission pretty straightforward in the sense of being able to transition a project from a for-rent to for-sale component and with the idea that we're still going to see some amended plans for, it sounds like, some minor changes from the previous proposal, but the opportunity for the applicant to proceed with condominium docs. Further questions, comments? If someone's willing to make a motion, we can put that on the table. Tammy, go ahead.
I just wanted to, the plans are being submitted to us for the site plan modification.
Okay.
Again, if there's very little change and it's eligible for an administrative review, you might not see it.
Okay.
So we need to see the plans and ensure that it doesn't change anything that requires a waiver or setback or anything, but if it doesn't, then you might not actually see the plan.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Again, the idea of approval of those plans could be administrative, so I'm good with that. Further discussion points, comments, questions? Someone's willing to make a motion, we can put one on the table and further deliberate?
Mr. Chairman, with the Planning Commission approves the creation of a condominium project for PC 25-33 Alter Ridge located at 2410 South LaPierre Road, referencing the plans that were received by the department on September the 3rd, based upon the facts that this development is consistent with the site plans that were approved by the Planning Commission under PC 22-26 in 2022. I'd like to just make the observation that none of us were on the Planning Commission in 2022, which may make it difficult for us to review the plans that were approved some seven years ago. That's right. However, the plan apparently is consistent with that, with that previously approved plan, with the reduction of one unit from 101 to 100. And the original plan was for rental and is now converted to be a condominium project with the plans being reviewed by the township engineer, the township planner, and the township attorney. I'd recommend that the approval of the transfer of the property from a, to create a condominium project, be given favorable consideration.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have support? Support by Mrs. Urbanowski. Okay, so just a couple of things, so just the understanding that the associated condo docs would still be reviewed by the township attorney, township engineer, and township planner, correct?
Correct.
To their satisfaction, and we're still, depending on this approval, on the condition that the associated site plan amendment is granted?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Go ahead, Mr. Joshua.
So just to the gentleman's comment, from an administrative perspective, you will take a look at the previous site plan and the new amendment, and then determine whether or not it needs to come back. Is that correct?
Correct. The ordinance does give criteria where the Planning Commission doesn't need to give, has, does not have to hear it, and we will verify that the plan submitted meets those criteria. If it doesn't, then you'll see it. But we, when we see it, we still send it to consultants. The consultants are still reviewing it. It just doesn't come before you.
And you'll notice, commissioners, the, there's no Exhibit B on this master deed and bylaws. That's because we haven't finalized the plan. So once, once Exhibit B is approved, which is the finalized site plan, that'll be attached to these documents.
Yep, so we're essentially empowering our staff if there, it's generally in the same spirit of the previous approval that was granted, that, you know, or minor changes such as, you know, this would come up in engineering conditions, right? Something might change that, that might still withhold all the setbacks, all the spirit and intent that we granted, but obviously give the opportunity for the project to move forward and not have to come back to us to hold things up. There are many times where the staff will bring up discussion points to say, hey, this is maybe a if or maybe or something like that, and then therefore, you know, we might make a determination or might be brought forth to us, but at this point, I don't foresee that being the case as long as our staff and consultants agree with that. Additional comments, questions, with a motion on the table? Again, to recommend the creation of condominium documents and associated for PC 25-33. Any other comments, questions from the Planning Commission? Go ahead, Tammy.
Just to correct that it's not a recommendation. It does still have to go to the board, but it's not a recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the Planning Commission? Anything, public comment, including that of the applicant?
No, thank you. We look forward to building in your community.
Yeah, thank you very much. We look forward to it. Roll call vote, please.
Lovett?
Yes.
Joshua?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Urbanowski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, that leads us to our next item, which is item number 8A, which is unfinished business PC 25-35, New Wave Church Site Plan Amendment, located at 1224 South LaPierre Road, Parcell 0914, 201025. If applicant's present, you want to step up to the podium? Again, as an unfinished business, we've seen this case before. I know we postponed with the effort to gather some information on potentially, I think, a parking agreement, and then also with the idea of maybe coming up with a different standard of parking calculation. So anything else I'm missing, feel free to kind of add in and bring us up to speed.
It was Chris Bristol again, lead pastor of New Wave Church. Yeah, last Planning Commission, there was a motion that was made to provide, I would say, from the Planning Commission, something just to make everyone feel more comfortable because everyone knows the property very well, that there's not hardly anyone parking in there, if any, on Sundays, the time that we would use the parking lot. I've just something to bring more comfort to the Planning Commission of making, you know, a motion for us to get our parking waiver, so we were able to obtain that from Unit 2 over there from two different entities, McLaren, and then also Michigan Eye Institute. And so we received that, those sign, both of those organizations have signed off on that. So we do have that, which based on a sanctuary occupancy, not the occupancy of the full building, but just the sanctuary occupancy, is that we would be able to have enough parking based on that. So based on those numbers, what I would like to do is just bring up Bill Jarrett, our architect, to discuss why that would be more sufficient to do a sanctuary occupancy versus the entire building. So I'll have him come up now.
Yes, good evening. I'm Bill Jarrett, the architect for the project. Yeah, we, we took some time, and we had some of this information realized before, but based on 188, 198 occupants in the sanctuary, that would require 66 parking spaces, and you probably saw this on the plan. And the calculations show that comes up means that we end up with 75 short is the bottom line when you add in the, when you see the calculations on there. But we also determined that of the businesses listed there, the number of closed, that adds another 200 spaces on for Sunday that aren't being used. So when you look at the difference between, you know, 200 spaces that aren't being used and that we're 75 short, I mean, it's pretty obvious that on Sunday mornings, we have way more than, I mean, three times as much parking spaces than we need, not even including Unit 2, Unit 2 being the RA Center and so forth. And then you, I mean, the argument could be that, well, what about the rest of the week? And, well, let me get back to the reason churches and most communities that I've been involved with, and I've done quite a few churches, the zoning ordinance is always based on the sanctuary seating, number of pews or sanctuary seating, and the reason for that is that it's, they figure that people are coming, a lot of families are coming, and so the kids that are in the schools, the classrooms, are coming with their parents, so there's, you know, less cars. And that's, so that's why it's usually just based on the sanctuary in most communities I've seen. It's never usually based on the overall occupancy when you start, unless it's actually going to be an actual school. And this is not going to be a school, this is going to be a Sunday school type thing, situation. So, but throughout the week, there might, you know, be certain things going on, Bible studies and other gatherings, but they're never going to be near as many as 198. You might have 30 here, 40 there. And, you know, just like, so there really isn't going to be a demand on the parking when the other businesses are open. So we just feel that in general, that we have way more than enough parking spaces for a church use in this case. And I think, even if the church were to grow, you know, and some of these churches, I mean, that's a possibility. I mean, chances it may stay about the same size, but many of these churches can, may end up growing gigantic, needing more, but first thing they'll probably do is add a second service on Sunday, which immediately takes care of a good portion of that. And then I guess the only thing I can say is if they grow that big where they're packing them in, maybe they end, may end up needing to move to a bigger space, or if there's complaints, if people are complaining, we can certainly look at alternatives at that point, like great, finding some off-site parking or something like that. So I would say, in that unlikelihood that someone may complain that we don't have enough parking spaces and it's crowded and everything, I mean, I think we can deal with it at that time. And I guess that'd be the answer to that. At this point, I guess that's about all I have to say. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, I guess my question with, you know, applying a different parking standard other than, you know, I guess the question is, is are you saying that there isn't simultaneous use of the sanctuary and the classrooms at the same time, or?
Well, on Sunday morning, like I said, a typical church's, church service would, you know, if they're absolutely packed, they could potentially have 198, if every seat's taken in the sanctuary. Usually a typical church service and.
Typical aside, this, this application.
Okay. This application more, most likely will be that some, a lot of the kids will be in the sanctuary at the beginning of the service, and then they'll be dismissed to the classrooms. And so likelihood of it, the church being 100% full and all the classrooms being full, probably, probably will never happen because a lot of the people that come into the sanctuary initially will end up being excused into the classrooms and so forth.
I guess that's kind of where we're looking for, right? And that's why our standard is the way it is, is because we've seen simultaneous use, not necessarily one or the other. I can understand some traditional church instances to where there's one or the other.
When you say simultaneously.
Meaning the whole.
The church being full and all the classrooms and the lobby and everything.
Yeah, or a mix thereof, right? Versus a service starting and then dismissal into other areas within for maybe youth service or breakout, and then coming back into the sanctuary, meaning that, give or take, there's about 198 people for that time on a Sunday.
Maybe you can address that. I mean, typically, when we're seeing 198 people will be in the sanctuary.
Yeah, make sure you step up to the podium for me.
Will be there in the church overall.
Yeah, yeah, to answer that question, yeah, absolutely. And again, what Bill was saying as well is that, that's why churches add multiple services, right? And so to spread that out, you know, for some reason, if you would have more guests on a Sunday morning, you know, you would have, you know, let's say a 9 o'clock service and a 10:30 or something like that to divide that up. And so, you know, but yeah, as far as the actual service goes, you know, 198, you know, inside the sanctuary or in the building, you know, so that's how.
So they wouldn't be simultaneously used?
Well, so what Bill was saying is, yeah, we have our kids in the auditorium at the beginning of service.
And then a breakout or.
Yeah, they're dismissed, they're dismissed into their classrooms. Or they'll start in their classrooms and they come into the auditorium, but then we start, and then they're dismissed. Yep.
Additional comments, questions, thoughts?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
A couple of things that, as I reviewed the, the application, they did provide a variety of information because there was some discomfort on my part, and I know the commissioner's part. They provided proposed hours of operation. Those would be Sunday, primarily Sunday, as indicated, and staffing, staff meetings, I believe, Tuesday. They did provide a shared parking arrangement with the Eye Institute, the Jason Eye Institute, so that, that needs to be verified. They did provide that in case of overflow. What I thought interesting, they provided a, which I think every church wants to do, is expand. They chose, they looked to a five-year expansion from 200 up to 400, hopefully within five, five years, to expand up to 400. And that 400, 400 petitioners would be a significant amount still on Sunday. So my own, my biggest concern would be if they're, if they're starting to change days of service when it would impact with the adjacent commercial uses, that they may need to come back before you.
Yeah, I think generally speaking, we're trying to be creative here, right? And it just in the idea of, you know, on, on paper, yes, it's, it's day one, might not be the issue. It's moving forward, for me at least, you know, and understanding that, that, you know, I appreciate the parking agreement that's in place, you know, so that, that helps. And then just the, the general understanding that, you know, it's, we kind of have two sides of the ordinance, right? How you calculate it, or you give us enough parking spaces, right? So the argument of, of what other standard, right? So you're, we're kind of dancing around that topic of the typical church, whatever it might be. But what I'm trying to prompt is, is that a different standard is justified, right, for this application, right? Versus, we'll kind of make it work and we'll get there, right? And, and it's not that we want to be, I personally, maybe I won't speak for everyone, I don't want to be difficult and make this a big complex thing. It's the idea that, you know, we're here to look at today and then also five years from now, right? So right now, you know, there's a handful of occupants in that center, right? And we're saying it's lightly used, right? But then when we get to this point of there's 200 people or, you know, I personally have done church work in the past, and you get to where a family of four and they're all driving age and the family are all coming in four separate cars, right? Which is how we get back to our standard of that it kind of levels out, right? So I'm looking for some, some findings to understand of, of, hey, let's calculate it a different way because you're different than our standard, right? And then in the other regard, we're at least meeting the application of, with the additional parking. parking agreement, we're hitting that number, one way or the other, right? Or between the combination of the two, we've met it. So I think we're getting closer, I think we're there. I guess I'm still a little timid here, because I'm not feeling full-fledged confidence in where we need to, where we're saying deviation, right, from our modification to our requirements is present, right? So, you know, we're not far off, but I'm just trying to hear of what's going to kind of happen to say, hey, we don't operate, you know, don't take this wrong way like a typical church, right? Where we do have youth services and those kind of things. So that's the comfort level where I'm looking to kind of receive here, so we don't get into a predicament. Even, you know, when we're saying we're going to grow and start a second service, that's where we've had discussions with churches to say, hey, they're going to be spread out at least 90 minutes between, or whatever it might be, hey, we're going to have traffic control, those kind of things. So it is a use that we're, it's allowable, but we're just getting the sticky situation of, yeah, on paper it's allowable, but now looking at the details, we're got these couple of sticky points. So do you follow where I'm getting after with these two sides of the equation?
Yeah.
You know, the way we calculate the number of spaces needed, and then we also have the inventory parking, right? So somehow those two asks have to get to a number that's amenable.
Yeah.
Versus just kind of, we're not here looking at the condition of, hey, all these extra things. So I'll kind of lay that out there, I guess, I mean, and if someone has a different opinion or thought, like I said, I'm looking to try and make this work with you, so don't take this in any wrong way.
Yeah, the other thing I just want to mention as well, because what is great about our situation is we're not going into the complex blind, or we haven't, you know, connected with the other tenants in the, you know, in the facility, getting to know their names, eating their food, and there's some good food in that complex as well, by the way. But, you know, just seeing their excitement for us to be in there as well, because again, that's going to increase their, you know, revenue. You know, church people get hungry after church, you know, so, you know, so all of that as well. So it's, I just want to just also just present that as well, is we're not going in there as just this church entity that no one knows about, and then hopefully everyone gets around it. So everyone's been in full support of that, but I just thought I'd just make that comment.
No, and to be clear, it's, this is not an issue of use, you know, in my opinion. It's not an issue of use. It's hearing, like I said, how we're getting to this number to say, you know, I'm trying to politely prompt some of these discussion points, right? We're not going to simultaneously use it. You know, we typically hear when someone comes in and asks for, generally speaking, another calculation to be applied, we see it to say, hey, we're not like the rest, right? Or we only, we have a huge warehouse, but we only have 40 employees because we have huge equipment that takes up a lot of space, right? So when we get into this predicament of, yeah, kind of, you know, just let's hope it works, right? That's where us as the planning commission, although we bear kind of the bad news and have to be these people, we're the ones that resolve it to where the site as it is proposed, right, when we look at all of this, it's not overparked. And I don't foresee, unless there's further partner agreements offsite, right, that we can start tapping into more parking spaces. So, you know, I guess that's where I'm struggling right now, is to feel the comfort that we're really proving another requirement, right, is there. I think there's ways we can solve it, and I think you're trying to suggest some of those things, but it's that comfort that there's going to be, you know, we're not going to exceed what we can provide even with the shared parking agreement.
Well, maybe I can just say something to help clear that up. So you're wanting really a kind of more of a firm calculation or to show that we have enough parking, in a way?
There's two ways to look at this equation, right? Is the number of parking spaces, with whatever you, however you come up with that, right? The shared use agreement, physically there, banked parking, whatever it would be, and then there's this other side of this, which you here are asking, whether you realize it or not, is to say, we have X amount of square feet, but we shouldn't be one per how many hundred square feet, right, for a parking space? We should be double that, right? We should need half the parking because we're this different type of church. You follow me? And you've kind of spoken to the idea of that, to say, typical this, typical that, right? But we're running into a lot of kind of the new age churches, saying there isn't just the idea that the sanctuary is the only thing occupied when churches in service, right? And again, I don't think we're talking-
Even if you were to take the calculation that I provided for the overall occupancy, if the church, every space was completely full per building code-
Yep.
We would still have enough parking spaces on Sunday morning. Probably still, I mean, probably still have twice as many spots as we need on Sunday. We need 118 spots.
Right, but assuming that-
We have like 200 and over 200 available on Sunday mornings, and churches-
But total parking spaces on-
99% of your, 99.9% of your churches in America, Christian churches, meet on Sunday mornings.
Okay, but that's assuming-
The main sanctuary.
Every parking space in that center, correct?
Pardon me?
That's saying you have enough parking spaces if we, if the church can use every parking space, correct?
I'm saying that on Sunday morning, it's, we have shown that we have at least twice as many spaces than we need. When we have 100, when we're at maximum capacity, that's the only time the church is ever going to be at maximum capacity.
But we also have other use-
That's why churches are a little unique, you know, I think.
Right, but we have other uses in the center, correct? That are going to also use those parking spaces?
Well, we've, we provided showing, we provided the hours and all those parking, most of those places are all closed on Sunday mornings-
Okay.
-when the churches has service.
Mrs. Urbanowski, go ahead.
Okay, but they could conceivably change their hours and open on a Sunday if they wanted to, and that would be their right to do that.
Sure, but I doubt all, I mean, what are the odds of all of them opening on Sunday morning?
I understand that, but it could. And then my other question that I wanted to know, and I see that Commissioner Cummins kind of reached into this the last time, but I was looking on your website, and you do have a lot of small groups that are meeting at places like Kensington or the place that's, the Mount Zion place there. My assumption would be, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, would be that they would move to here, because you'd have space for that.
Throughout the week, you mean, like small groups?
Correct. Yep, yeah, so, you know, that's fine if it doesn't go over the, you know, but if you're looking to expand and, you know, double in size, then you're eventually going to have to add, you know, more hours, you know, to have church, I would think. And that concerns me, like how, you know, that would be great if you grow, that's the point, right, for you guys, but again, it's, that's a lot of people coming in, and if you're going to add small groups and that type of thing, is it going to get out of-
I'm sure there will be small groups, but like I was saying, that, you know, you might end up with 30 people there on a Wednesday night or something, you know, you're not going to have-
Sure, but I mean, who's to say that you won't do, you know, a small group, like between two, you know?
Go ahead, Mr. Joshua, sorry.
You know, so I guess from my perspective, the way that I look at it is, it seems like we're making a temporal decision, so we're making a decision, or trying, being an estimate to make a decision based upon what we see right now today. But the second piece is there's a stated goal for you to double the size of your congregation, so you have a goal to grow, and that's great and that's phenomenal. I would also believe that the other businesses around you have a goal to grow as well, and I think that was the point that my fellow commissioner was trying to make, is that today, you're right, they're not all open on Sundays, but if they were given the opportunity to be able to make more profit by being open on Sundays, we would have to give them the ability to do that as well. And then all of a sudden, we would run into a problem with the parking situation, and that's what we're asking for. Instead of maybe, likely and typical, we need to get down to calculation so we can understand the basis of the numbers and what's behind the calculation.
Well said, Mr. Joshua. You know, again, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I don't think anyone here is against the use, right? And against the idea of a church going into this complex. I think there needs to be some comfort here, right? And I know there's been some direction taken towards the parking agreement, and there's agreements in place with essentially, you know, on the property, but, you know, separate parking lots. I don't, I'm struggling to understand, you know, or us to kind of make a motion with comfort of us saying, we can come up with a different standard, right, to make this parking calculation work. You can't just say it's on a whim, right, that it kind of sort of works out on a Sunday because right now it does, right? We're here as planning commissioners, looking at today and also five years from now, right? So and if there is a understanding with the landlord through the term of the lease or something there that we can have to say, hey, the church is going to use this amount of parking spaces on Sunday, and the rest kind of have to follow suit, but as is this parking lot, right, and I know we see a lot of parking lots very vacant, right? I understand that, okay? But we see uses change. So when something changes or someone wants to put a 24/7 workout facility in here, you know, God forbid, three tenants leave and I know there's a Planet Fitness across the street, but just bear with me, that happens, we're going to see a different influx. And we know from the baseline of this development that it's not overparked, it's actually slightly underparked, right? And now we're adding this use to it to say, hey, so, you know, I'm not trying to be discouraging by any means to this use, I want to be very clear with that. I want to be creative here, and again, the argument to say, because we operate like X, this is why we're coming up with this parking calculation, right? And therefore, we can base that on a physical motion or a motion of record to say, based on what we've heard from the church, from New Wave Church, they don't need, we shouldn't be looking at New Wave parking requirements like we do X church, Y church, or Z church, right? If we can't come up with an additional number. If you don't want us to look at that side of the equation, then we need to come up with something that, at least for myself and the planning commission, that we get some more comfort to say, beyond just the one parking agreement that we're going to say, and, you know, I'm in the landlord world, so I know this well, but just to say that the church is going to use X amount of spaces on a Sunday, right? Or of some sort, right? That's the two arguments that we're looking at here to try and find some middle ground.
Based on the calculations, we're saying that they'll need, if we base it on the sanctuary seating, we'll need 66 parking spaces on Sunday morning, for each, you know, for each service or for a certain amount of hours, or whoever you want to put it. And there's 245 parking spaces, I think? So there's still, in addition to the 66, there's still plenty of other parking spaces for the few businesses that decide to be open on Sunday, it could be a 24-hour. But, you know, usually, in most situations, there's not as many people parking in shopping centers on Sunday morning, even if the businesses are open, yeah.
Understood, but I don't have anything from anyone else. I understand we did an inventory, right, and we kind of said, here's the scoop, but it's, there's no real confidence to say that we're not going to get to that, right? So we kind of have a lot of hopes, but not, and we're here looking for facts, right? And again, not to be mean, not trying to be difficult here, we're just, this is the predicament that we get put in, and we're, and then, God forbid, someone else comes along. Go ahead.
If there's a landlord here-
Yeah, go ahead.
He might be able to say that he'll provide 66 parking spaces.
Good evening, my name's Zach Searly, I'm the managing director over at Ori Marketplace, and I've been working with our leasing team to build a synergy there.
Yep.
And before we ever entertained the lease with Chris and his church, we went to all of the tenants and said, hey, this is what we're thinking. How do you feel about this? My goal is to, is to build something there where all of the tenants work together, where the uses are complementary. And so with the medical building next door, I also spoke with Gary Keolian, who's the owner of that building as well, and he said, Zach, I'm all for it, that sounds good. But as a landlord, like, even though I have the right to say, go ahead and do it, talk to Michigan Eye and McLaren, and here's their, here's their number. And so I reached out to those two as well and said, hey, this is what we're looking at, we know you guys are closed on Sunday, how do you feel about this? And they said, it's great. As medical, right, there's a chance that that could be re-tenanted in the future with something else. McLaren, I believe, has five years left on the lease, and Michigan Eye has 11, so there's a long time before, that's outside of the term of Chris's lease. If that were to get re-tenanted, it would most likely be medical, because it's going to be really expensive to change that use to retail, and the rental rate would be lower for straight retail than medical, so it's unlikely that that's going to change use, which would change the parking dynamic on Sundays, especially Saturdays potentially, but Sundays, you know, vast, vast majority of medical is closed. With our, with our other tenants, is there a chance that they could want to grow with the church as it moves in? Absolutely. They're all excited about it. The restaurants, number one, right, the dance studio and the gym there are excited about it. The new game store that we have there is very excited, a lot of them, I think, are members of the church as well. But 56% of our current rent roll expires after 2030. We sign long-term leases, Tropical Smoothie, Parlor Donuts are both 10-year deals with, I believe, 20-year options after the fact, like they want to be there for the long haul. So when talking with Chris, we were in negotiations for weeks over this very issue, because the last thing that I wanted to do was to bring in a tenant in that corner space that would destroy what I've built with the other tenants. And so we had talked about that, I had all the same questions that you guys did. What, when are you going to be open? Is it going to be during the week? How do we make sure that if this grows, it doesn't put me in front of the firing squad of all of the other tenants who've come before him? And so we put that in the lease, that it's only on Sundays, and that if there's going to be occupancy over, I believe it's 50 in the lease, that we need to talk about it. And that's got to go through me, or, we don't plan on selling this building, we love it here, it's been a great, a great project for us, but any future landlord that would take that over would have that same, that same right. Chris does have options on the lease, I know he's looking to grow and move on from there in the future. But any other landlord in the future would have those same rights that I've built into the lease for now. So, and while the church could grow, and we hope that it does, just like some of the businesses could choose to grow along with that, the inverse could also happen, like it could be 150 people, and in five years, it could be 175, it could be 200. You know, I guess we hope they grow, but you never know what's going to happen. It was a gym in the past, and there's 24-hour across the street, so a lot of that stuff, even though it's in flux, my, my role as the landlord here is to protect all the other tenants, because I can't let one tenant ruin the other 80% of the center. So I wanted to just fill you guys in on those protections that probably weren't in any of the packets, and that was the reason why I wanted to come tonight, was just to show my support and the neighboring landlord's support as well.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I mean, that isn't something that's been spoken to, so, I mean, those protections, as you said, are what? Are occupancy-driven and date-driven, so we're not talking about multiple days a week? And is that something that we can review and understand as something of record? Because if you follow where I'm getting after here, right? That's what we're looking for, right? That there's some sort of agreement in place that, hey, we're all very clear that this is the case, and this is not going to go exceed this amount or whatever it would be, but right now, we're not, I'm not seeing the good argument on either side of this, it's kind of like, we hope it works out, right?
Right, like what's the official safeguard that's going to say, okay, this is how much it is, and if we go over that, then there's recourse from the landlord side to say, hey, you're in default, and we have recourse to-
Well, bigger picture, it becomes our problem, right? We see cars backing up on M24, we see, you know, it becomes our issue, right? And I don't have any good example of someone to say, yeah, we're, man, our standard is crazy, right? Our standard is unreasonable. We've seen, if anything, we've seen people going above and beyond our standard, not below it, right? From a calculation standpoint. So you have an existing center that we have an inventory of parking that we got to work within, right? So if there is some sort of agreement of, hey, this is how this is going to work, but, you know, and I appreciate hearing terms and all that kind of stuff, I get that language, right? So if we're talking about a five-year, you know, term, and that things aren't going to more than likely turn over at that point, but there's got to be some sort of comfort with our, with, I think as the commission with this parking to say, it's not going to flip the other side, and we're not going to be talking about, you know, don't mean to mean anything bad, but let's say another church, right? Or another use that is going to demand parking on a Sunday. Right now, it looks real pretty on a sheet of paper that we have Parlor Donuts, Tropical Smoothie, and- Smoothie, and I forget, a couple other places open, right? But the bigger picture of it is, is, you know, that's right now, right? We're here to look at now and five years.
Sure.
Okay, so, so that's where I'm struggling, is, is there isn't the clear definition here of, to say, hey, our, your, your calculation amount needs, is crazy for us and how we work, right? We're gonna bring that number down. And, or on your side to say, hey, we're gonna allocate dedicated to the church, this is what's gonna go to them, and the rest are gonna resolve itself within that.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Walker.
Hypothetical question. Without disclosing any trade secrets, the leases you have with the other tenants discuss the parking issue?
All of those tenants preceded the church, so they don't.
There's no mention about parking in the leases you have with your other tenants?
Typically, it's, it's, all parking is shared, and that's, that's on, on us as a, as a landlord to make sure that our uses are complementary.
Okay.
So, you know, that's, it's, and it's, it's the biggest concern that I have, is parking. And so, when, when Chris came to us, and we looked at this on Sunday, the first thing that I thought as well was to check and see who's open on Sunday. When we, when we started on this project, the building was 50% vacant. And now, if, you know, Chris is able to move forward, we're, we're at 98%. And, and the parking is, is not a problem at all right now. And that's without the Sunday Michigan Eye, McLaren, 55 spots. So if we're at 200 spots on Sundays, for the, the architect's calculations, and they need 75 of those, I think it's three to one is the number of occupants per car, so at 125 vacant spots, that would give us another, do the math.
You indicated that you talked to all of the other tenants, and all of them have no problem with this proposed parking situation with the church?
So Chris got letters from 13 of the, of our tenants, I spoke with many of them before signing the lease with Chris, and then I helped get the two, the, the Unit 2 agreements for the additional 55 spots next door, and that, that landlord and those two tenants are, have signed off, their corporate real estate departments have signed off on the...
When you say next door, are you talking in, in, in your, in your strip mall?
Yeah, so there's two buildings, the strip mall, like, our strip is an L.
Right.
Right, and then there's the Michigan Eye, which is a little square down here. And normally, in, in projects like this, all of the parking is shared. For whatever reason, when they built this, when they, when they designed the condo docks on this, this, this project, they had it separate, there's like, separate sections and a, and a common area, it's like, nothing I'd ever seen before. But that said, just means that we need to get approval from the other building to make sure that we can use their parking, when normally, it would all be shared. So we've done that, yeah, that's great, thank you. So the, there's three colors on the, on there, and the very light gray on the bottom is, is Unit 2, and so, those tenants and that landlord have signed off, the kind of white, there's only, the common area is that L in the middle, that's, borders along Unit 2, just that, that South Drive, that's technically the only common area. And then, all of the, all of the rest of it, the dark, dark area, is, is from our property.
Would all of the tenants sign off on this?
They already have.
Have we seen that?
Well, we've had in our packet, but from the actual signees of leases, I mean, not just someone working the counter at Tropical Smoothie, I mean, has that been verified? Can that be confirmed? We didn't just go introduce the, you know, whoever was working there, but everyone's in agreement, you know, from tenant to tenant, you know, the actual authorized signer of the, of the tenant lease said, yes, I'm good with this.
If we don't, if we, if for whatever reason, the, the signatories that Chris has are not the ones that are on the leases, I can say, I've talked to the Cat Cafe, Tropical Smoothie, the gym, they're all fired up. They're, they're really excited for, for this, not only because, even if they're not closed, or even if they are closed on Sundays, the extra traffic is just gonna show people that they're in there.
I don't think anyone's arguing the excitement, just to be clear, right? I think we're all excited, we want, we want, we want our community to grow, and I commend you on the growth you've had in the center, it's great to see it occupied, right? By all means, I know what it's, what it was. The issue that I'm struggling with is, is that none of those other users, right, we have the right to say, you can't open on Sunday, right? And then, when that parking lot gets filled up, the person that they might call is you, but the second phone call is our staff and us. And then, we get handed, you know, this predicament to say, how did you allow this to happen, right? Because you granted New Wave Church a parking, you know, a deviation on parking, without everyone being on the same page, right? So it sounds like, once, you know, once again, there might be a way to get here, right? But I'm still not feeling the, the full confidence, right, other, all aside of excitement. I don't think anyone here is not excited for this. It's the fact that we need to make sure we're all on the same page with this, and not whoever working Tropical Smoothie is signing off on this, but Tropical Smoothie, or whoever is authorized, or the landlord, or whoever it would be, to say, we agree that on Sunday, this many spaces are allocated towards here, and that the uses are gonna follow suit, or whatever there would be, right? And better yet, you know, as I argued, that's the inventory side. The other side is, it sounds like there is, you know, a different approach that might be here with New Wave Church, to say, we're gonna have 198 people, right, and beyond that, it's going to be different. We can't assume on, on the typically this, and typically that, and another community this, and another community that, because again, we haven't had the argument to date that says, we should lower that number. Okay, so, and again, that's back to kind of this previous discussion, not what you're bringing forth, you're, you're, to me, how I view you is the inventory side, right? How many parking spaces are there, and how can we allocate them towards New Wave Church so we don't have an issue? The other side is architect and user to say, we're different, and this is why.
Seems like the inventory side is gonna be the path of least resistance, if we can just say, there's X number of spaces, if we can allocate those to the church, and, because like you said, I mean, the, the church could be there for longer, we know that their lease is a five-year term.
If, the fact, if it's in a lease, you know, that it's a, we're talking about it being a five-year condition, you know, something along those lines, absolutely. I think that's, that's a huge piece of this. The other part of it is to say, not to just block it out, is to say, is the user's side, to say, how we operate gets us to a different calculation number. Not on an if and but, maybe because in another community, we look at sanctuary seating, we need to look at this calculation, right? We need findings of fact to justify this deviation. Do you follow on that side of it, from the architectural perspective? And can you do me a favor and do it in the microphone for me, so it's on record?
Sounds like you're offering some ideas on how we could come to an agreement.
Let's put it this way, I'm in the development world, I'm in an architect, and I've done church architecture for many years, so I get it. But, and I'm not trying to, I, we're not here to shut everyone down, I, I don't want to be clear on that. I'm just saying, we gotta have some, some operational understanding, right? Then, then, we're kind of like this, we're kind of like that, right?
We're kind of in a, we're in agreement that you would like to see in the lease, a stipulation that so many parking spaces will be used, or dedicated to the church on certain hours on a Sunday.
Typically, like, so, the person who controls, right, the landlord, the landlord dictates, you know, ultimately authorizes tenants the opportunity to utilize their space for a term. Within those leases have use agreements, right? If there is something from the landlord that said, this is how this, we're owners, right? People who are able to sign off on it, right? And that's why, even the shared use agreement that we have, we still need to be able to say, hey, that person signing that document has the right to sign off on Unit 2's parking to New Age Church, or sorry, New Wave Church on Sunday. Sorry about that, my apologies.
Whoever you are.
Yeah, so...
You say you've done a lot of churches, what have you found as far as zoning ordinance is what the parking's based on?
So typically, it, you may see churches that have sanctuary seating, right? But it would be a traditional church model, right? But when I see some of the churches coming about that we're seeing that are not necessarily a sole denomination or traditional...
We're a traditional church model.
Okay, so, so don't, don't spin it, okay? My, my point is, is the code looks at it one way, right? So you, as the applicant, need to come to us and say, a different calculation is justified for us because X. Not because Oxford uses it, not because Joe Schmoll uses it, why you, right? Why in this circumstance?
I want to mention, the overall calculation we did was, we were asked to work with your building official, he based, he wanted it based on the building code.
Yep.
And as you know, the building code, you take the square footage of different spaces and the use, and that's how you figure out what the occupancy is.
Right.
So that's simply how we came up with the overall.
Sure, and, and there's plenty of things in the building code that talks about simultaneous use and all those details, right? But again, how to you are...
I'm just trying to figure out how you would say that you're looking for occupancy calculation based on the way they operate.
I'm looking for why, I'm looking for why another parking standard is justified for you. That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
And I need findings from you as the applicant to get us to agree that that is justified for you as an applicant, because otherwise, we look at our standard of our ordinance, we apply it to you, which is based on the occupancy of the building, and then we look for the inventory.
It's...
We have an inventory problem.
Zoning ordinance is based on the overall maximum occupancy of the building, as if it was, every space was completely filled up, is what you're saying?
Um, yes and no. The point is, is we're looking at the church along with all the other uses, right?
Your planner, the, your planner that reviewed it based it on the sanctuary, even though we had, we had both calculations, because I wasn't sure which way you were gonna go, and they kind of felt that it was based on just the sanctuary seating too, because it's the, it's kind of the standard, it is the standard, really.
And if you think that's the standard, and our standard is wrong, come prove it to us.
I don't think your zoning ordinance really clarifies that, it doesn't, it kind of has more general terms of different uses, but it doesn't, it's not real specific when it comes to churches, if you look at your zoning ordinance. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It is one per every three, based on the maximum occupancy of the building.
That included churches and several other...
That is just churches.
Several other uses.
That's just places of worship.
Okay. On based on maximum occupancy of the overall building.
And I think that the chair made a good point, a good comparison earlier when he talked about, for example, at the warehouse, that we base our number of employees based on parking, they made the argument that because of the large machinery, they didn't need that kind of, that amount of parking. That's what the commission is looking for in this case, is that this is, this is, this is a different than what our typical calculation would be, and why is it different? And lay that out, and then tie in the, the, the agreements with the Eye Institute, and the lease agreements, to lay all of those out, why it's different, otherwise, you'd have to meet the current standards.
So when you say, lay it out, to why it's different, are you looking for like, a letter or something that, or, I mean, where we just do our, I mean, like, how the church is out, like we mentioned?
I don't care if it's on a presentation, if it's on a piece of paper, best yet, if it's on the sheet of a plan, right? But a narrative to say, this is how our church operates, and this is why we shouldn't be applicable to our standard. Because, in my opinion, we haven't had any other person argue that a different standard is, is justified. And we have other churches, right, that have, that are overparked, or have parking control and are overparked, right? So, you know, make, make me the bad guy, right? But we're, we're cautious to just grant this and hope it works out.
So you've had problems with some other churches in the community?
We're not here to discuss every other project, and I'm not here to discuss Oxford Township, right? I, I'm here to discuss this case, and I need findings from you to say, there's two, the only way I can tee this up, calculation of how you get to parking, and again, findings of fact on how to get to that calculation, and then the other is inventory. There, there's only two numbers here to argue.
The only issue I can see with that is, we, sure, we could come up with something, and it would basically be a description that we just talked about, that 198...
I'm sure you and the team can come up with something.
Right, 198 spaces includes the same people that would be using the classrooms, for instance, it would be the same people that'd be gathering in the front hall before they go into the sanctuary.
Yes.
So it's...
So it, it's, we're making progress. I, I don't want to be, come across as shutting this use down, once again, to be clear for the record, but I, there needs to be some, some greater comfort here for me, and feel free to, if anyone wants to kind of chime in, you know, because you feel otherwise, I don't want to dictate the conversation. Ms. Walker, go ahead.
I tried this once, I'll try...
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Walker.
I'm not gonna try it again.
Okay.
If you had something from each decision tour on the lease, that every one of the people have with Farben, or whoever the lease is with, who say, this is fine with us, we approve, we will have no problem with the church getting this number of parking spots, I'm only one vote here, but I'd go along, that would go a long, long way with me to solve the problem, if you want to do that. If you don't want to do that, that's fine too.
Can you repeat what you would...
We need signatures from authorized people. That's the summary of it, right? So if you're gonna go, if we're gonna go to the, the side of increasing inventory, or saying, inventory is allocated towards X user, we need authorized, we, we need comfort from authorized people, not the person making the smoothie, but an understanding that Tropical Smoothie is okay with X, right? So...
I understand.
Two, two parts, right? I think we've discussed this quite a bit, and again, we're, we're here to help, and we're not here to just shut you down, but we're, we're talking about today, which I hope you guys grow, I really do. I, I wish you all the best, we just, we're, we're being cautious.
I know, I'm just trying to get clarity on exactly what you're looking for, because I don't want to run into a situation where we...
Put it on the plan, present a narrative, do, there's a lot of different ways to do it.
The next time we meet, and like, you kind of say, well, maybe this isn't really what we were looking for, you know?
No, we're just looking for, for some, some reasonable explanation and of, of why a different standard, or details on how the inventory is going to be allocated towards you. So, let's, I, I'm gonna move to postpone, so, I'm gonna move to postpone PC 25-35 New Wave Church Site Plan Amendment, located at 1224 South Hopear Road, Parcel 0914-201025, referencing plans, date stamped, received September 4th, 2025, for the following reasons: the opportunity for the applicant to provide detailed information regarding a reasonable parking standard be applied to the project other than our standard, and/or the opportunity for tenant and landlord to come up with additional shared parking agreements to meet either a reasonable deviation of, of parking standard, or our standard parking agreement. I make that a motion, do I have support?
Support.
Support my Mr. Walker. Further discussion by the planning commission. Either way, if, Mrs. Urbanowski, go ahead, if you want to just, overall, you can just...
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we did get one letter from Mr. Gavin Mills, Sales Associate at NAI Farben, in support, he's a longtime former resident and an active commercial real estate salesperson.
All right, thank you very much. Additional public comment on the motion, including that of the applicant or anyone else in the audience? All right, roll call vote, please, motion to postpone.
Urbanowski?
Yes.
Joshua?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Gross?
No.
Love it?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much, that leads us to item 8B, which is a request to honor the previous wetland permit for vacant parcel located on east side of South Hopear Road, south of Silverbell Road, Parcel 0935-200032. Is the applicant present? Go ahead, step up the podium for us.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Paul Weedmeyer, and I'm a project engineer with JB Donaldson, and our intent is, as shown on, be there in unfinished business, so, pretty self-explanatory, and I'd like to honor the previous wetland permit.
Okay, might need a few more details than that, but generally speaking, there was a wetland application on this previous site plan. Mr. Landis, feel free to chime in if, if I'm missing anything. Mr. Landis, feel free to chime in if, if I'm missing anything, but the wetland permit, I believe, wasn't fully closed and, but essentially was, was applied for, we had granted it. Our wetland permits technically never expire, but it, it is the, the opportunity for us to essentially acknowledge that this wetland is still good for, for maybe a forthcoming case, correct?
Generally speaking, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, just give a little more history on it. So the, back in, in, um, 2000, um, a project called Lone Eagle Development, um, was underway. They received a wetland permit from both the township and Eagle. Um, the permit included the filling of about .4 acres of wetland and the construction of about .6 acres of wetland mitigation. Project commenced construction, um, some of the wetlands were filled, the mitigated wetlands were constructed. A conservation easement was also required, uh, that conservation easement was, um, written and recorded, uh, in, in a file. Basically, all of the wetlands, um, outside of the conservation easement were approved for fill. What remained in the conservation easement were, uh, on, wetlands that were to remain, and then also the constructed mitigation. The project did not get fully built, uh, the building didn't get built, so there were some of the wetlands that didn't get completely filled. And over time, um, some of those wetlands have even grown in size slightly, so some of those wetlands have encroached outside of the conservation easement. So it, it's kind of a unique situation. We thought maybe we should bring it to, to you to see if you wanted the applicant to, you know, go back through the permitting process, perhaps to get at the same end result? Or do you want to perhaps, you know, honor the previous permit and allow the project to proceed?
So, Mr. Landis, in your professional opinion, um, do you have any issue with the previous application or anything that you saw in that previous application?
No, I, I don't. Again, you know, the wetlands to be filled were permitted by the township and the state. Um, I don't see high, high quality wetlands that would be filled that would change. I think if we made it go through the process, in all likely, likelihood, we'd probably end up at the same point.
Okay. Um, and then just clarification from our staff. Is a formal motion needed on this or just direction for...
You know, I noticed that we didn't do one, it wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Um, so...
There's not a case number yet.
Yep, yep. So I'll make a motion to honor the previous wetland permit for the vacant parcel located on the east side of South Appear Road, south of Silverbell, Parcel 0935-200032, for the forthcoming PC case to be determined, um, to, to be assigned a number, um, and that a new wetland permit and review is not required. Do I have support? Support by Mr. Lovett. Further discussion on the motion? Any public discussion on the motion, including that of the applicant?
Nope.
Roll call vote, please.
Urbanowski?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Joshua?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Lovett?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the board, and have a good night.
All right, that leads us to item 8C, which is Township Initiated Text Amendment for Zoning Ordinance 78, updates to Article 20, um, even 1, 2, 3, and 4. Already kinda walked through this case. Tammy, anything else that you would like to add, or, again, we're, uh, recommending body, the Board of Trustees, any, anything else you wanna go through?
No, unless there's any questions.
Oh, I think it's fairly straightforward. I think it's a, a reasonable, uh, update to, uh, the section. Additional questions, comments? Someone's willing to make a motion, we can put one on the table.
Chair, I move out the planning commission for a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to approve and adopt PC 25-44 Township Initiated Text Amendment to Ordinance 78, uh, the updates to Article, uh, 20, Sections 20, .00, .01, .02, .03, and .04, for the reasons that this ordinance, uh, provides for, uh, taking into account the recent activities relating to railroad front, freight yards. Uh, it is a rarely used provision of the ordinance and provides for the consistency with our other ordinances.
All right, motion, do I have support? Support by Mr. Lovett. Further discussion by the planning commission. Seeing none, any public discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Gross?
Yes.
Joshua?
Yes.
Urbanowski?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Lovett?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. That leads us to item number nine, which is public comments. Any public comments?
Seeing none. We do have a communication from the Oxford, Ox, Oxford, Oxford Charter Township of, uh, to adopt their master plan. We received that on the 10th of September. Planner report and education, uh, we have none, although many of us, I know, are attending, if not all of us, are attending, uh, the Planning and Zoning Retreat here later this month, so we look forward to that education opportunity. No committee reports at this time and no public hearings to be advertised at this point. I have no comments. What about you, Mr. Lovett?
Uh, yeah, with openings, opening day, uh, taking place today for bow season, uh, we are thankful for our state land that people hunt on. Uh, just a note for everybody who utilizes that for recreation, probably a good idea to put on some, uh, some high-vis orange, um, just for a safety precaution, and, um, give the hunters some respect. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. Mr. Gross?
No, thank you.
This is Urbanowski.
Um, American Bloom, uh, was this past weekend. It was well attended, and all of our volunteers and some of our bus captains over there, Mr. Lovett, you were, you know, thank you for volunteering, but, um, yeah, we saw Tammy and anyway, um, it went well. And, um, we did a really good job. We won our category for population and, uh, video. We won for the video. So anyway, everybody had a really good time. Beautiful day.
Very nice. Yeah, and for the record, uh, we hosted America in Bloom Conference, right?
The conference, yes.
The annual conference, correct?
Yep. Well, we hosted it, we were the host city, so we had all of those people here on Friday. Uh, we started, you know, with lunch at Wildwood, which was really cool. And then, uh, they toured around the township, and then we ended up downtown for a little reception. People were let loose in the city and they had some dinner, and then, um, a few people came back on Saturday to do some tours, um, you know, like Miracle Field and that type of thing, and watch the kids play, um, ball. But, um, the, the conference itself was held in Rochester, but we were the host city, so, or township, but, yep.
Very nice. Mr. Walker?
Thank you to all for the, another successful library book sale. We did very well, thanks to all of you folks. And if you have any little folks that hang around with, that enjoy snakes, spiders, big creepy crawly things, we have a, a, sorry, sorry. We have, uh, Friday at, I think, 2 o'clock, uh, the second annual Pet the Python Day at the library. So if you...
Tim will be there.
I do like snakes.
If you like to do it, show up.